She gets nerves with you, Mayor, you know.
I don't know. I came back.
He's got a better constitution than I do.
He had three little kids yelling at him.
That's why I ran out of the house.
I don't know if Greg's having trouble. He texted me, "Are you in?" And I said, "Yes." So I don't know if he's having trouble. Did you hear anything, Liz?
He always has trouble.
He does, yeah.
Well, it's looking at his screen. He's here. I don't know what his issue is.
6:30, Liz, am I on?
Yes, you are, yes. Yes, Bill, you are.
Who are we waiting for? Anybody?
Okay, Greg just said he's in.
Okay, I'll call the Environment Public Works Planning, Zoning and Development Committee's order at 6:31. We discuss orders 2117. Authorized to make engineering to prepare plans and specifications and provide construction administration bidding services for water main replacements and payment resurfacing on Cromwell, Parkwood, and Bain Park Drive in repeating ordinance 20-49. Any questions from members of council as this is a standard operating procedures on the waterline replacements?
Nope, looks good.
Georgia Costello?
No, I'm sorry. I did see one just earlier. The section numbers on that piece of legislation are out of order. They're not sequential, so that needs to be amended.
Okay, send me that. Actually, it's going to have the three readings. So you can email all members of council the amendments. At your convenience, Liz.
I will, yep.
Thank you. Georgia Costello, you have any input pertaining to this legislation?
No, thank you very much, amendment. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I moved that it goes on second and third reading. Mike?
Second and subsequent third bill?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero, second and subsequent third reading.
Ah!
Okay, Environment Public Works Planning, Zoning Development Committee ended at 7:34, 6:34.
I'll take one minute just to get my papers all in the right order. Okay. Local government and community services will be called to order at 6:34 PM. On our agenda this evening is the city's response to systemic racism, and tonight we will continue our final evening of interviews for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coalition. We do have a lineup of, let me think, two, four, six, seven people this evening. So we will have a full night's schedule similar to what we've had before. And then the fun begins where we can begin to actually form the committee. So before we get started with the interviews, I just wanted to ask if anybody has any questions, concerns, or any additions to the conversation regarding the city's response to systemic racism? No? Okay, so Liz, I think we have at least the first person queued up. If you're ready, maybe we could start a little bit early. And could I ask you once again this evening to be my timekeeper? Thank you. Okay, do we have, Jeanette, I'm so sorry, I'm not going to be able to say your name correctly. Could you help me understand?
Sure, it's pronounced Jeanette Pejot Ayala.
One, thank you very much. I appreciate you helping me with that. So I don't know if you've watched the other interviews, but what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to ask you two standard questions, and then the mayor and the rest of council will kind of jump off and ask you related or unrelated questions to try to get a feel for you as you pertain to this committee, okay?
Sure.
Perfect. So the first thing I'm going to ask you is what makes you a good fit for this task force?
Well, I have been living in Fairview Park for about 14 years. All three of my children went to Fairview High School, and they all graduated from Fairview High School. And living here, I feel that that could be a way for me to give back to the community that I've lived in for 14 years.
Thank you. What actionable steps would you like to take to make a change in our community?
I would like to perhaps maybe implement some community engagements in which we can perhaps educate the community on different cultures and what it's like to to, I guess, understand other cultures. Not so much bringing them in, but maybe understand. And I think education is the key when it comes to cultural awareness and cultural sensitivity.
Thank you. Mayor Cooney, would you like to ask a question or two?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Ms. Paletta Ayala, how are you today?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, thanks for joining us. I see you work with the County Prosecutor's Office?
Yes.
Do you work with police departments at all as a victim? You know, witness supervisor, or are you just, do you work with the victims mostly?
I work embedded in the prosecutor's office, and my job is basically to assist victims. Well, my job is to supervise the advocates, but is also to assist victims through the criminal justice process, which can be very somewhat difficult and intimidating for someone who has experienced something very traumatic for them. So my job is basically to walk them through the process, understand their rights as a victim, and make sure that they feel comfortable through the process.
Okay. What do you see to be the primary goal of the coalition?
I believe is to perhaps provide education for the community. Like I said, I've lived here in Fairview Park for about 14 years, and my children went to Fairview High School, and I have to say that I was disappointed when a few times my kids came home somewhat sad and at times crying from the interactions that they even had with the teachers about certain comments or certain things. And, you know, I would like to see the schools and other communities be more aware or be culturally sensitive to other cultures, basically, because sometimes people are not aware that they're making certain comments that are offensive. And I think bringing to that attention, of course, in a nice and respectful manner, could bring in the conversation and open the conversation of racial biases and basically just racism.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time and for your interest.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Payet?
I'm going to. Pejot Ayala.
Payet Ayala? Did I get it close?
Pejot Ayala, yes.
If I may, Councilwoman Muering?
Yes, please.
Yes, Jeanette, first of all, I'm sorry that your children did have to go through that. It's a painful thing where you feel like they're in a safe place at school. And I acknowledge your comments too, where sometimes it's sheer ignorance on the part of individuals. You know, when this sort of thing happens and increasing people's awareness of, you know, what they're actually saying is a very important thing. I was curious at the time of the incident, can I ask, you know, did you feel like, or did your children feel like they could turn to anyone or bring it up to anyone at that time, or did they just feel like they truly were silenced? I'm just curious if there was any sort of opportunity.
Actually, no, they just came home and told me. It is my understanding now that they're older, it is my understanding they didn't have anyone to go to to tell them about how they felt about either a comment or a joke, either from other students or even teachers.
Right, right. Yeah, that screams out why we need to do this. And again, I really had to endure that. Okay. And I'm curious, at the, you're part of the victim witness supervisor, is that correct, your title? Are you participating currently in training or workshops or anything that you could kind of bring the knowledge to us, to this coalition?
Definitely. We are constantly, I know I supervise six people, and that is something that I keep on my mind forefront, because we deal with the public and the community, you know, in Cuyahoga County. So we come across all kind of different people and walks of life, and we have to understand the differences between, you know, certain cultures and accept them and be accepting of them, and make that person feel as comfortable as possible. So definitely having trainings on being culturally sensitive, understanding where people sometimes are coming from. That is, that is the key of, you know, relating to other people.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Muering?
Yes, please, go ahead.
You mentioned a couple times how education would be important. Can you give me a specific example of how you'd like to educate the public?
It could be done in, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
It could be done in many different ways. I mean, we have social media, you know, that's a tool that we can use. We can also, I know we've done it in the past with our church, we've done like an international festival where we have like different booths from different countries, you know, and food. And there's a representation of that country, whether it be by decoration or someone dressed, acknowledging where they come from, and having someone speak about certain things, you know, it could be in a fun, it could be in different many ways. It could be in a fun, different way, it could be in an educational manner. It could be on trainings. I mean, you name it. We don't have to be very, you know, structured, but something that brings in the awareness of other cultures and the acceptance of other cultures will be, you know, good for the city of Fairview.
Perfect, thank you.
Council, does anyone have any other questions?
Yeah, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Jeanette, so first off, thank you for putting in and, you know, applying. We appreciate the interest. It's the first time I've seen you outside of the arraignment room, so good to.
That's where I saw you.
Good to see you under different circumstances for the first time, so. So there's no doubt working in the prosecutor's office that, you know, it's a very diverse group of people that you work with, you know, as I know from, you know, working in the building. So the only thing I want to inquire about is how do you think, you know, working in such a diverse environment will really help facilitate cultures to understand each other better?
Can you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
Just, I was commenting that, you know, I know you work in a very diverse environment and working with the prosecutor's office, so how can those experiences help you to get different cultures to better understand each other, you know, while working with this commission?
Oh, wow. My experience working with different victims, I mean, I, this is one thing that I try to do when I work with victims is that I try to make them feel as comfortable as possible. I try to welcome, you know, if there's something specific that they would like to be acknowledged, I make sure that that's addressed. Asking question if I'm working with and someone from the LGBT community, asking them how do they want to be addressed, he, she, or he, those things are important. And I think that experience will help me be part of this, you know, this committee. Because I'm already exposed to that, so that will actually just help me even more work with, you know, different people in the committee, but also different people in the community. And I would like to say that sometimes we're going to have to have those really uncomfortable conversations in which we have to acknowledge certain things, and that's going to be key. Something else that I do on a regular basis is when I sit down with the prosecutors and the victims, I sometimes have to be that media person when there's, when something arises and either side are not getting it. Sometimes I have to be that, okay, wait a minute, there's, we have to have like a buffer, and I could be that buffer. You know, and I think that experience has, you know, has helped me working with different people and in different where they are in life, basically. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure if it does.
That does. That does very much. I appreciate the elaboration, and I think it's a great experience. You know, everything you've done with that, so thank you for your services to the and thank you for the interest in this as well. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Council, does anyone have any other questions for Jeanette? Jeanette, you have about one minute left. Is there anything you'd like to leave us with tonight that we haven't already talked about?
I just wanted to say that if I am chosen, this will be a great opportunity, and I look forward to be a part of it.
Thank you. We are so glad that you applied and really glad to see all of this interest coming from the community. Obviously, we on council can make decisions, but we can't do it without the residents, so I'm so glad for that. Can you give us a little bit of time, a little bit of patience? We are doing our last round of interviews tonight. And then we need to go through the applications and do our selection, so it might be a couple weeks yet before we get back to you, but we will get back to you either way. I guess if you can grant us that patience, we will let you know shortly.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for the time for interviewing me.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time tonight.
Sure.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Liz, is Ms. Lessor on?
No, she is not. Not yet.
Well, it's still early. She wasn't scheduled for seven, right?
Correct.
We can either give her a little bit more time, or we could try to fit one more in 10 minutes. A little early for a break yet, right, guys? By any chance, is Ms. Kramer on?
No, the only person I see this on is Heidi Lang, who's scheduled for 7:45.
If Heidi would be willing, we could take her early, or we could just take a quick break and wait for the rest of the group to log on.
Daryl?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, why don't we see if Ms. Lang's ready?
Okay.
I'm checking with her now to see if she's on. She's at her computer. I just sent her a message. Give her a moment and she'll be ready here, she said.
Ms. Lang, thank you so much for joining us almost an hour early. We appreciate you being willing to fill in our gap here.
Well, thank you so much for taking me early, and thank you so much for taking the time to coordinate all of this.
Thank you. I don't know if you've been following the other interviews that we've done, but I will ask you two questions. And we will have follow-ups from the mayor and from council. So the first question I have for you is what makes you a good fit for this task force?
So I have been working in nonprofit fundraising for about 20 years, and I have I have championed many causes and rallied for many, many different groups of individuals. And I've witnessed some of the best of our community, and unfortunately, I've witnessed some of the worst. And when I mean our community, I mean society in general. And, you know, it's it's a tough world we live in, and we're living in a time that we can really, really be a part of some positive change to really make this world, I don't want to sound corny, but make this world a better place for our children and for their children. And, you know, it would be it would be very meaningful work for me to bring some of what I've learned in the nonprofit sector to the community of Fairview Park.
Thank you very much for that. Can you tell me a little bit about the actionable steps you'd like to see taken here in Fairview to change the community?
So I really think that a lot of a lot of what we need to do first and foremost is to really become more aware of our own community and everything that's been happening. And for me, I feel that my eyes have really opened to a lot of things, and my journey in this whole process really just started a couple years ago. On becoming more aware of language that I've used and really reflecting on my own reactions to things. And I really think that it really needs to start there. Educating the community and allowing forums and opportunities for people to to speak and to share their experiences to really make others aware of everything that's happening, because I think, I think there is a lot that's going on, and I don't want to say we look the other way sometimes, whether it's intentional or unintentional, but I really just think that education and awareness really needs to take place. And I know that there were some steps this past summer. There was a book club that was started, and I thought that was a wonderful experience and a very very good first step, which some people in the community were able to partake in. But I think there's, there's a lot that we can do to educate the community in a fun way. And then there's, there's other things that we can do, because everybody learns in different ways. So some people, some people need to see and hear things, some people need to read things. So I think if we, if we go about it in a couple different layers, but definitely education and awareness have to be the first two things.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Mayor Cooney, is there anything you'd like to ask Ms. Lang?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, Ms. Lang, how are you today? Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
You know, you're talking about education and awareness. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but do you feel that's the primary goal of the coalition? Is to educate and make people more aware? Or do you think there's something else that you would consider to be the primary goal?
So I think education and awareness are two big components. You know, the I feel that everyone is coming from a different lens when they're thinking about the creation of this task force or coalition. You know, I know that I was I was able to be a part of some of the early conversations that council had regarding this, and you know, education and awareness definitely are two very important things, and you know, we really need to look at every component of the city as it pertains to each of these words. And I think there's a lot of emphasis on the first word and diversity. And we need to understand that diversity doesn't just mean a racial issue, that it crosses so many different components. And, you know, we need to look at each word and really need to define each word and look at how each word goes throughout the whole community. So I really think that this is probably going to evolve into many different areas. There may be education might be the first thing that the task force might do, but this may evolve into something much bigger than just educating the community. But I think I think taking the first steps, at least for the first 12 months, education from every single person, every single person in this room, we all need to be educated more in this area, and every person is growing in this journey. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you did. You did. Thank you. And thanks for your interest.
Thank you. Council, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lang?
Here, Sarah, if I may, or Councilwoman Muering. Ms. Lang, one of the things you commented on is with the, you've attended many workshops regarding DEI. And you said, it opened your eyes to the long impact it's had on our country. I'm just curious, you know, what things kind of really rocked you or really like stood out as you, you know, went to these workshops? Is there anything in particular where you walked away thinking, "I never even thought of that," you know, and then you?
You know, it's, it's so interesting. There was a training I went to about two years ago, and I have to attend a lot of trainings, because many of the funders that I work with, they require this education, and they're looking for more diversity for organizations that they're funding. So this is one of the reasons why I've been attending a lot of these trainings. But there was one training in particular where there was a study that was done for different educators in different schools, and it was to show that boys, particularly African-American boys, that they were looked at very African American boys, that they they were looked at very differently. And not just by a white teacher, but by a person of color as well, and that there was this stereotype that has been instilled because of different media, different just the the way we have thought about boys in general, particularly in the ages of eight to 12. And they were monitoring the where the teachers' eyes went in the classroom. And what I thought was so interesting was you would think that it would just be from a white person's perspective that they might be looking if there was trouble in the classroom, that they might be looking at at the boy, particularly the the African American boy. But it was also people of color that were identifying that that was their go to boy that might be causing the trouble. And I walked away thinking, this is so much bigger than I ever imagined. Because, you know, it is not just something that, you know, someone of a particular race has these stereotypes. That these are so far deep and embedded in us. And that was definitely an aha moment for me, that I knew that this was such a big thing. And that there are so many layers and that this has been going on for over 400 years. And a couple of trainings is not going to fix it. It's going to shed a little bit of light, but that was definitely a moment during that training that I I will definitely remember.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I could imagine that would stick with you. Some poor kid, eight to 12 years old is already being judged or condemned unjustly.
And and when you when you look at the statistics in so many schools, if you really pare down grading and test scores, it is a lot of times going to be eight to eight to 12 year old boys. And if you start pairing down in race, they're they're going to be dealing with more detentions or more behavioral disciplinary actions because the teacher is going to go right right to them nine times out of 10.
Yeah, they've prejudged them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Heidi. That's interesting. That's it, Counsel Waring.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for Heidi?
Yeah, sure. Ms. Lang, thank you for the interest in putting in and to help out the community. It's greatly greatly appreciated. So the one thing I question I have is what types of experiences from your nonprofits do you think will help translate, you know, with this coalition and to help make a difference going forward?
No, so I've I've worked for a variety of missions and most recently, I used to work for an arts nonprofit, but I just transitioned to a new job a couple of weeks ago. So it's been a whirlwind couple of weeks, but I I would have to say that I spent five years working in the Washington DC area. And I worked for an organization that cared for abused, abandoned and neglected children and teen moms. And, you know, these were some of the most vulnerable children and teenagers in the DC area. And just heart wrenching, the stories, many of them in and out of the foster system. And seeing and meeting all of all of our clients, as I usually did get a chance to interact with them, hearing their stories, but just seeing that they weren't really they weren't any different. They they're not. And it's it's really very sad at what what's happened to them in society. And that they they have been a product of their surroundings. And if a couple of things were different for them, their lives would be very, very different. And the organization that I worked for, that was one of the things that that we did for the teen moms, they lived in our residence and they had to attend high school on our premises. We had a fully accredited high school. And so they they all received an education. Almost every single girl ended up graduating from high school. And, you know, just very different than if if they never resided at at our facility. I don't know what would have happened to them and their child. But these are these are young girls that will tell somebody that they didn't get pregnant on purpose, but that they were happy that it happened and they all they all kept their babies. But that's their their secret that they always told a staff member was that now they will have someone who will love them unconditionally because no one's ever loved them in their life. And it's things like that that I feel that I can bring to the city. Because these things are happening, not just in, you know, areas that that we like to, you know, turn away from, but these types of stories are happening right here in Fairview Park. It is not just just something in DC and, you know, certain neighborhoods, but these these stories are everywhere. They're not just they're not just in certain zip codes.
All right. Thank you. That sounds like some real good experience. I would imagine that you probably worked with, you know, a diverse group and a wide net of people. So that that sounds great.
Absolutely, because our clients, you know, I told you about our clients, but then we I dealt with in fundraising, I dealt with senators and some of the, you know, some of the wealthiest people in DC who helped fund us and, you know, definitely had to pivot very quickly in conversations. You know, depending on on who I was talking to. So every day it was a very diverse conversation with with many different people, but you know, unfortunately, some of the stories were so were so challenging that I was not allowed to talk about work for certain periods of time when I had certain certain residents that I was working with.
Heidi, that has been, oh, I'm sorry, Greg, go ahead.
Oh, I was just I was just going to say thank you for sharing. That sounds very, very powerful and would be great to have. So so thank you for your interest and giving us the time to to talk to me.
Thank you so much.
Heidi, that has been very eye opening and I appreciate you sharing your experience with us this evening. We have about one minute left. Is there anything you'd like to leave with us before we part?
The only thing that I would like to say is that I'm I'm so happy that that council has made this decision to move forward with this task force. And I really think that no matter what decisions are made with with who is going to be on, I just think this is going to be so good for the city. And I really hope that everyone is able to take full advantage of of this opportunity because again, I feel that our journey is really just beginning in recognizing, you know, where we're at and I'm just I'm very pleased that I'm a resident of a city that recognizes that this is something important. So thank you all for for making this decision and for moving forward with it.
Thank you. This is our final evening of interviews. We are wrapping up tonight and then we will be meeting back together to discuss and figure out who we are appointing. So if you can be patient with us for another couple of weeks, we will let you know either way.
It's not a problem. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful night, guys.
Thank you. You too.
Take care.
Bye bye.
Hi, Suzanne, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Sure, I'm happy to.
Wonderful. I don't know if you followed those previous interviews, but I will be asking you two different questions. And then counsel and the mayor will ask you follow up questions and their own questions. So if you're okay, we'll go ahead and begin.
Okay.
Thank you. So my first question for you is what makes you a good fit for this task force?
Well, it might seem unusual to think about an older white lady as a good fit for this task force. But I have two reasons, really. And they both have to do with history. I am a long term Fairview High School graduate and Fairview resident. And so I know something about the history of race in this community. And also because I've lived through quite a few things. I mean, the March on Selma was the year I graduated and I've lived through many different incarnations of the struggle for racial justice. So I think that's one reason that I thought I might have something to contribute.
Thank you. Can you tell me about some actionable items or actionable changes you might like to see made in our community?
No, I can't because I think that my first job in a group like this would be to observe and learn and listen before I came up with any thoughts like this. I will tell you this, I found it very interesting that I in looking around at what's available, found it very interesting that there was a 2019 study of discipline in the Fairview schools that found that our students of color are 10 times more likely to receive disciplinary action than white students. And that's accounting for the fact that Fairview is 90% white. It's taking that into consideration. So I think there's probably a lot more information like that out there. And honestly, I think I would need to be a learner first.
That's a very fair statement. I can appreciate that honesty. Mayor Cooney, do you have any questions for Suzanne?
Yes, thanks, Ms. LaShure. Thanks for joining us today and thank you for your interest. Following up on your comment there, do you, at this point, would you have a primary goal for the coalition that you would like to see achieved? Or is that something that you would, you know, want a little more time to 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 look into the matter?
Well, yeah, I think I think it's important that our goal be to look at our community in terms of systemic racism. Because I think we're all aware of our personal struggles with individual racism and our our experience of whiteness and what that means. But I think we should have come to terms during the pandemic with the fact that racism is very systemic. People of color are dying at a far greater rate because of that systemic racism. So my thought would be that the first thing that such a group would need to do is kind of make an audit of schools and and housing and other organizations in our community to identify whether there are areas where there is systemic racism and we need to make a change.
I see that you you're experienced, you're a psychologist. Are you still practicing?
Yes, I'm a failed retiree. I can't seem to stop working.
Well, hopefully you'll get it right here soon, but did you have you worked in for the government at any point in time or have you always been in private practice?
I've worked in hospitals. I've worked at community mental health. I've worked in private practice. Right now, I'm doing work with Catholic charities with migration and refugee services and gaining an incredible amount of knowledge about the diversity of refugees coming into our Cleveland community and what they might have to offer Fairview.
Yeah, we just recently met with Global Cleveland and they were talking about the you know, Cleveland is one of the largest refugee destinations in the country right now.
Yes, you know, like Congolese.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your service there and thank you for your interest with 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 us as well.
Sure.
Mayor, counsel, does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thanks for joining us, Ms. LaShure. Thank you for your interest in taking the time. I just have a quick question for you, just out of curiosity, actually. Your your work with Catholic charities. A lot of the refugees that you see coming to the Greater Cleveland area, where are they being placed as far as communities around the area and and what makes these communities different from Fairview Park?
Access to housing, inexpensive housing. They're mostly being placed on the near west side. And I have to say that a lot of the housing that they're placed in is really just of such poor quality. Now, most of the children go initially to Thomas Jefferson Newcomers School. And then when their English and cultural knowledge is sufficient, they spread their wings and go to the school of their local district. And at that point, some of the refugees have moved out more into the wider suburbs. I don't know of any that have come to Fairview Park.
I know years ago, I used to spend a lot of time down at St. Coleman Church. Father Bobby Gin, who was very involved in in welcoming refugees to the Cleveland area. Quite a few Liberian families, actually. Just, I mean, just, I mean, just great families, very well educated and just just ready to assimilate into, you know, American culture, so.
I have to say, I feel like it's really a blessing to have been given this work to do so late in my career. I've learned a tremendous amount.
Well, thanks for joining us and for offering to to share your skills with this coalition.
Thank you for inviting me to visit you tonight.
Thank you, counsel. Any other questions?
Um, yeah, sure. I do. Ms. LaShure, thank you for for putting in and, you know, having the interest and spending the time here tonight. It's definitely appreciated. So with the amount of time that you've spent in Fairview Park, I'm wondering, have you noticed any trends or anything over the course of the time that that may have changed or any observations, it's kind of just in general that, you know, how things were, you know, maybe before compared to now?
I think we are a slow changing community. However, my graduating class was a sea of white Christians. There was not a single student of color in my graduating class. And I think that we are lucky enough to have a little more diversity than that today because of NASA, because of the hospital, for many reasons. So there's been some change. But Fairview is still a 90% white community, so we are slow to change in that regard. I think as an inner ring suburb, our mayors and city councils have done a phenomenal job of keeping our economic outlook bright. So, you know, it would be so easy to lose that. But I think we've done well there. But we're slow to change, I think.
All right. Well, I appreciate that and appreciate you coming in and having the discussion with us. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
If I may, Counsel Waring?
Please go ahead.
Dr. LaShure, obviously, in working with the Catholic charities, I would think in dealing with so many diverse people, you know, with the migration office, have you had specific training and have you found any workshops or things that you feel would be helpful for Fairview Park to kind of tap into or piggyback from the knowledge that you're gaining from them?
Wow, what an interesting question. So I spent really most of my professional life working with trauma, victims of trauma. But the application of that to refugees and an international population was new to me and it was an amazing learning curve. So I've I've done every workshop and YouTube video known to mankind that I can find. But I can't say that I have focused on taking the news to the wider community yet. You know, I would have to research that.
Thank you. I can obviously see you're not someone who shies away from learning as your educational background and experience are evident of that. So I I'm sure you would be a sponge for every new piece of info that you could take in. So I don't doubt that. So thank you. Thank you very much for your response.
Thank you. I actually have a question for you as well. You had mentioned that, you know, during the pandemic, we've obviously learned that there are systemic things at play, just in terms of how COVID has affected the minority community. I'm wondering, this coalition is going to be very much focused on things that are happening here in Fairview Park. And it's easy to take guide from national issues, but it's much harder for us as a city to affect national issues. It's much easier to affect things that are happening here in our city. How would you take things that are happening nationally? How would you take things that are happening nationally, whether it's issues or trends, and boil them down to changes we could make here locally?
Well, I, I mentioned that 2019 review of Fairview Park Discipline, actually it was, it was Ohio-wide. I just looked up our statistics. But I'm thinking that all of those national trends, there must be data in our community. There must be data in our community that we can access about healthcare, for example. You know, we're in the shadow of Fairview Hospital affiliated with one of the greatest medical systems in the world. But what is the status of our residents in terms of access to medical care? I'm very interested in housing and finding data about that, which you may already have access to. I did find, I couldn't, I couldn't quite get the data, but I did find that there was some organization a few years ago that went to the outer ring suburbs and had like a potential black tenant and a potential white tenant go to apartments and ask the same questions. And then they gathered information from that. And like I said, I found the study, but not the data. But I, I feel like those national trends, they're happening in our community too. We just need to get the right lens to find out what's going on.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Ms. LaShure tonight? Thank you so much for joining us this evening. It's been very eye-opening speaking to our residents about this topic in only the best ways. So we do appreciate you joining us. We are finishing up our interviews this evening. And then we'll spend some time trying to digest everything we have learned and everyone we've talked to, and then we will be making appointments in the next couple of weeks. So we will be in touch. Just if you could give us a little bit of patience, we would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you tonight and I hope to be helpful, but either way, I wish the group the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Have a great night.
And I see we do have Jennifer Kramer on. Jennifer, are you ready to get started?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you. I knew, I know you've been on for at least the last interview. So I'm going to go through similar to what I've done for everybody else, the same two questions. And then we'll have jump-offs from the administration and from Council, okay?
Perfect.
Okay. So the first question that I'd like to ask you is, what do you think makes yourself a good fit for this task force?
The, the task force is of interest to me because over the last several years, I've had the opportunity to kind of dive into the civic realm within Cleveland, the city of Cleveland. I worked down there. I've taken some leadership courses and classes that have exposed us to different parts of the community and different issues that affect certain audiences disproportionately, whether it's medical, whether it's technology, food deserts, things of that nature. So the interest, a lot of that information that I received and learned was so eye-opening. And so it just kind of, and then it blended very well into the work that I do for Destination Cleveland, which is working to attract visitors to our city, but also help our own residents have a good perception about their city. And as we have kind of moved along in, in time, racial diversity inclusion has become a big part of that. Ensuring that people who are looking at our community either to live or to visit are seeing people that look like them, that their experiences, that are experiences that they want to have in a place that they visit. And then I think a lot of that really got, was turbocharged by the pandemic, especially from a business perspective, as we were working with organizations who were basically trying to survive. And we wanted to, to reach out to them to help them do that. But then not only did they suffer from the pandemic, but also a lot of them hurt very much because of what happened on May 30th last year. And so we're really trying to bridge and, and bring the community together. But in doing that, we wanted to make sure we're having the right conversation and getting to people the way that they want to, to meet them where they are. So it's been a really good education of understanding why you can't do a certain thing because it doesn't reach the audience you are really intending to reach. So those are some really eye-opening moments that have intrigued me about the Coalition. And I think I can bring to the table just with the work we've been doing with our diversity and inclusion and equity efforts at work.
Thank you very much for that. Can you tell me, what actionable steps would you take to make a change here in our community?
I, the thing that has come to light for me in, in the work I've done in the past, and I think it would be applicable here, is just really having that conversation and setting up the right forum for people to share that information. Whether it is a town hall meeting, whether it is surveys, whether it's a combination of that and then a street team going door, door-to-door to talk to people and, and in their comfort zone, but really understanding the issues that exist. That, that would be to me, I, I have a lot to learn. I don't know all of the issues. I won't pretend that I do. But I do assume that they exist and would love to understand kind of the, the depth of those and what we can do to fix them.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like to ask some questions?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kramer. Good evening. How are you today?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. Thanks for joining us. What, what do you see to be the primary goal of the Coalition? And, and how would you help it achieve that? And I know you're, you know, with Destination Cleveland, you do a lot of marketing, I would assume, with them. Do you think, is that something that you would be applicable to, to this, to this work?
I do, I do think it is. I do. One of the things before, when I was mentioning, you know, having people see what, what the community really does, what the community really does look like. It's more from a marketing perspective of just making sure your imagery is diverse and inclusive. It's really, it's really getting, it's, it's more than just throwing up a couple pictures with people who are of different skin color and things. It's, it's really the whole package of the experience and what, what we're offering from a, from a school perspective, from, you know, extracurriculars within the community and things. So marketing would be one element of it. But just really having that real honest conversation about what, what are those, not to pull from the last interview, but the, the national trends, how do those big things, how do they, how do we look at those on a micro level in our community? Let's have those conversations in those discussions and have it be two-way.
Good, great. And with Destination Cleveland, do you do, are you, are you doing work here in Fairview Park? Are you mostly downtown or is it the whole region? How, how does that connect?
So our footprint is from, is right now, especially downtown, pre-pandemic. Our typical footprint extends from Cedar Point to Estebula, down to the Pro Football Hall of Fame, which is very relevant today. So that is our, our footprint of me personally. I was working with our residents. Local was really my audience for about four years. And just recently, I obtained our leisure market and then our group tour market. So folks who are coming in on buses to see the city. So there is that, that retention and also that attraction component of our work.
Okay. Well, you guys do great work and we appreciate that and hopefully the draft will bring all those people in that we originally planned.
We hope so.
Thanks, thanks, thanks for your time and thanks for your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Kramer?
Councilwoman Waring, if I may? First of all, Jennifer, fellow John Carroll Business grad, I'm glad that you're going for this position. Go, go Blue Streaks. And I, I enjoyed reading what you said, you know, you're someone that loved Cleveland. And, you know, the Destination Cleveland, I, I actually, you know, whenever I see any studies or think, you know, information that you've gathered, I find it very intriguing. So I commend you on the work you're doing and reading about what were the fifth best city in terms during the pandemic to have U-Haul trucks moving in versus moving out. So that's a perk. But I, I share your sentiments in that you said, you know, you're someone that loved Cleveland and loves everything about it, as do I. And how it saddened you, you know, as you heard from different groups, different minority groups, how they don't feel that same way. What sort of things, obviously, did Destination Cleveland discover and how then do you combat that, you know, in, as Destination Cleveland is finding out that the LGBTQ, you know, community or the minority, other minority communities aren't thrilled about Cleveland? What things are you doing to combat that?
Well, I think, and it's, it's interesting because I feel like every, every group, there's a time for, for every group. And it actually started with the LGBTQ community and our hosting of the Gay Games. So having that event and showcasing what attributes we already had, we were able to showcase that. And then, and, and build upon it and say, okay, these are the people that are coming here, these are the people that live here. What do you want to see? People who are coming here, what are the, what are the restaurants we want to elevate? And make sure that people are getting the experience that they are, that they're seeking. And then, and then we're very much in the research right now, particularly of black and brown-owned businesses and understanding their strife, especially coming out of the pandemic. I think the pandemic stalled us a little bit, if I'm being honest. Stalled us a lot, actually. We're starting to have those conversations and right now we have things, forums set up between now and June, where we can glean that information from the community and make our action plan. Since then, we've been working to make sure we have a clean, committed program that we are making sure that residents, or I'm sorry, businesses are following clean and safe practices. And we know that, that, that the black community was particularly hit hard by that. So is our information getting to them? Can we, can we literally bring the things to you? So you can continue and carry on your business and make things, how can we help you keep your business afloat from a clean, clean and safe perspective? Or are there any other things that we can be doing to help you? We are, our reach was not wide and vast into those communities. And so we were still trying to crack the nut. And so we are listening, we're continuing those conversations and, and they're, it's uncomfortable, but it's, it's conversations we need to have so we can understand how to work together because we're all part of this community. We have 117 different ethnicities in this community. And I know we can't, you know, it, we work hard to showcase them as much as we can. And so we, we're trying to do that with the conversation. What we feature as part of our city and then kind of what we want our plans to be this future people.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, and keep up the good work. I feel like Cleveland is definitely on the rise and I, I thank you for your commitment to this.
Thank you.
That's all, Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you. Council, any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. So, Ms. Kramer, first, thank you for putting in, you know, and, and joining us tonight and giving us the time, you know, to discuss this. So for, with your, with your work, we've been talking a lot about your work with Destination Cleveland. Can you just provide like an example of an effort or an experience that you did with Destination Cleveland that, you know, the Coalition might be able to adopt or, or, or could translate well to, to help?
I refer, referred to it earlier and I think when I was talking about, and in my application, I had mentioned the fact that we were trying to get to businesses and our marketing brains all deferred to this email campaign. We'll email them, we'll get the information to them and we can help them opt-in and things. And what, an awesome opportunity that came out of it was understanding that some of these people, some of these folks, that sometimes they don't have those, that technology, the wifi, they don't have the access to that. So we really had to think and figure out how to get them. And so then we started an active street team, getting people out into the community and getting interviews. It wasn't just email, it wasn't just a phone call. Sometimes they couldn't even get them on the phone or they didn't have the phone book. So the best part, I feel that what we've done well, we do, we do a lot of things well. But what I was so excited about is really just getting to people. Like, because an email's a different interaction than a conversation face-to-face versus the phone call and things. And that, that's getting to know your community. And I think we've, we've, it's, it's done, we've done a good job. It's afforded us a lot of opportunity to really get, have deeper relationships with people than just an email transaction.
Well, that's great. Well, I, I appreciate that. Sounds like a lot of good experience that could, you know, be very beneficial. So, so thank you again for, for the interest in joining us here tonight. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Berger. Does anyone have any other questions for Ms. Kramer? Okay. Well, I do have one question for you. So, barely came off mute. You know, as I was looking through your resume or your application, however, whatever we want to call it, you know, you talked about, you hope that the Coalition opens doors to more honest conversations amongst neighbors. What, given your experiences going out into the communities, other than just knowing that it needs to happen face-to-face, what else have you learned about getting other people to share their stories? Because what we've learned is these stories are not ours to take, right? We need to gain the trust and, and help people feel safe to tell us how they feel unsafe. And so I think that we need to be very sensitive to that with this Coalition. I didn't know if you had any thing that you learned during that experience?
In terms of being sensitive to people's needs, I think, you know, if I understand that, that correctly, you know, we are a partnership-based organization, so we always are looking for members and that means paying members. And that was the conversation that, and it was trial and error to really not put those things, not come out with a sales message, right? And be, and just be like, we know this is what we are, but that's not why, why we're here today, you know, and try and kind of quell those fears of like, well, you're just asking me for money so you can help me. And it's like, no, 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 that's not, that's not the reason. So it really, we had to kind of take a hard look at ourselves and the messaging and what we wanted to say. And make sure it was, it had the potential to be heard with the, with the spirit in which it was attended. So there was then, there were some people that really just didn't want to talk to us and, or some people that didn't were good partners of ours and then something happened and we had those relationships that we were able to build and able to circle back at a different time. I think the biggest thing was just being kind of sensitive to what was going on in the world at the time. I mean, a lot of these businesses were downtown and we, we had several, sorry, several hard conversations with our organization about, hey, they're building, they're putting plywood on their windows. They don't want to hear about a clean and safe program from us. They don't have windows, you know, like it's just, and we had like window clings and the kits that we were giving them. And we literally don't have windows. So it was a lot of conversation back and forth, like this is not the right tactic. Like, forget this campaign, let's focus on this. So it was a lot of, not dancing, but just being flexible, but really understanding what these businesses were going through. And we had to go to a lot of, we have a view on one aspect, it was really working with our community stakeholders to be like, hey, this is what we're doing. What do you think about this? Can you give us, what are you hearing from your partner members? And things so we could try to address those sensitivities upfront as much as possible. Not that we were always successful. We learned a lot and that was the point, so.
Thank you for sharing that with us. With one minute left, is there anything you'd like to share with us that we haven't covered yet?
I don't think so. I am just very excited about the opportunity for this. And I was excited to see it come through online and to participate. I think that there's a lot of work that we, we've done from a broader city perspective that I think could be leveraged here and vice versa, I think. And, you know, I'm excited too. I saw, I was reading through some of the information before that Mayor Cooney had sent out about the REAL program and the Ohio Municipal, Municipal League and just gleaning best practices. And I think it's just, I'm excited to work together with people in our community, but see what we can glean from outside and make some differences.
Thank you, Jennifer, for your time tonight. We really do appreciate it. Tonight is our last night of interviews and then we will be getting together for deciding who we're going to nominate. So if you could just bear with us and give us another couple of weeks, we will definitely let you know how the Coalition goes.
Of course. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the time.
Thank you for your interest and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Good seeing you. Take care.
Do we have our next person up, Liz? Mrs. D, I have to assume that you're Felicia Munoz-Davenport? Did I get that correct?
Correct, correct.
I'm learning a lot this week. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Yep. If you've watched the last couple of interviews of the last couple of weeks, I'll be asking you two questions. And then the mayor and council will follow up, okay? Okay. So the very first question I have for you is, what makes you a good fit for this task force? Okay, so the very first question I have for you is what makes you a good fit for this task force?
I've only watched one other interview, but I'm assuming that most people are Fairview residents. And that's the same for me. I've lived here 17 years. I have two daughters in the school system and they've gone here their entire time. My older daughter has developmental disabilities. And that's kind of really what piqued my interest about this Coalition was possibly an avenue to get more inclusive community support. Kind of, I'm looking at this from the, you know, persons with disabilities and how to get them more involved in every aspect of community.
Thank you. What actionable steps would you like to take to make change here in our community?
You know, I think Fairview is so small and I think it really has that small town feel where I think it's possible to enact change in a short amount of time. Because I think we have so many people that care and that want the best for Fairview. I think we would have to do things like open dialogue. You know, we have a great library. We could make use of library space to have discussions with people. Set goals, even if it's subcommittees and subgroups, subpopulations, set some goals. And adapted programming at the rec, at the library. I'd like to see more inclusive job offerings throughout Fairview Park. I think there's a lot of ways that we can make everybody in Fairview feel equal.
Thank you for that. I don't fully disagree. I offered up a resolution a couple of weeks ago, recognizing Rare Disease Day. Because I've had people comment, you know, with a disability or a disease that impacts your everyday life, there are things that are not seen by the rest of the community. And there are very small changes we can make to to impact change. You are correct with that. So thank you for sharing that. Mayor Cooney, would you like to ask a couple of questions?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Munoz Davenport, for joining us. So you you talked about it more inclusivity, you said your daughter has developmental disabilities. Do you, what do you see to be the primary goal? Is it, you know, I think I really like your comment about, you know, it's a small town and little things can really have a positive impact throughout. Is there, do you see a primary goal here or?
Two things. One thing is, a couple of years ago, I started at the rec an adapted running program for children with special needs and their siblings. And it it just took off. I mean, I had probably five times the amount of volunteers that I needed. And that just tells me that people are ready to engage and people want to make those changes and people just don't know how. And we ended up running the Derby Dash. And we had people in the community lined up all the way till the very end. I was the last person to cross the finish line with a student with physical disabilities. And we had people lined up down their driveways and their sidewalks still clapping for us. And that just shows me the power of people in Fairview Park. So that's one aspect. The other aspect is, the not so great part is, just the other day, I was driving down Lorraine. And in that one drive from one end to the other end of Fairview, I saw two people that I know have graduated from Fairview Park High School recently, like in the past five years with disabilities and just kind of hanging around. And it breaks my heart because I I feel like they don't feel they belong somewhere. And that's what I would like to see changed.
And you're an educator, are you?
Yeah, I, so I was a teacher. I taught Cleveland Public. I taught in Strongsville. I taught for Ombudsman. I taught for the library. I taught GED. Job skills, job training, and I've been in a lot of different, I worked at Guidestone when it was Brea Children's Home. So I've worked with a lot of different people in a lot of areas of life and I totally understand barriers. And I understand challenges and I understand people being afraid to talk about their challenges.
Well, thank you for breaking down some of those barriers here for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, does anyone have any questions?
Uh, yeah, if I may.
Please.
Yeah, so I first want to say thank you for putting in and submitting interest, you know, for the the Coalition. It's great that we get people that are interested in that and for your time for tonight. So you already mentioned it once, the the Running Club. My first question was going to be after the pandemic's done, is there going to be a return of the Running Club?
I think there is because I think we, I think my family needs it more than anybody. A reason to get out there and move. But, um, yeah, and and I've actually thought about how to make it bigger, how to make it more community, you know, more community involvement, but still being safe for those that are involved. Because I could see that easily translating to like a Fairview walking program, you know? I mean, we have Fairview Hospital, we have the rec, we have so many safe areas and parks and places to meet up. And I feel like it's just, it's just a place where you can take an idea and you can make it happen. And I know firsthand that the people in Fairview want to do these kind of things. And I know that their heart is big and they're ready to learn and to be educated about other people. Whether it's LGBTQ, whether it's people of different nationalities, whether it's people with disabilities, that's all the same thing. It's just kind of being enlightened and opening your mind to learning about that. So I probably will bring it back, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. And I know the Derby Dash is back on this year. So I know that the the Running Club was very successful. So so thank you for that. It's it's a wonderful thing that you do that and you volunteer your time. So I just want to, you know, extend appreciation for that. And thank you again for joining us here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Council, anyone else have any other questions?
If I may, Sarah.
Please.
Mrs. Davenport, in in the various places you work, did they require or have workshops with the DEI training? And if so, what are some of the things that stood out that you learned to bring to this Coalition?
So most recently, when I worked with the lib, I worked for the library. And I did GED classes and I worked for a Department of Labor program called Youth Build. And it's young adults ages 18 to 24. It's a full-time program, half-day in class to get their GED and the other half they're learning a trade. So I was teaching at Vatterott College where they were learning construction. And we had to take a class, the staff had to take a class called Bridges Bridges Out of Poverty. And it was a really enlightening program for people who don't understand barriers. It was really enlightening to understand that what we assume and we take for granted, you know, we're we're up here with what we're equipped with and what we have in our resources. And we assume that everyone has that. But the people that we were working with were much below that. And even in the way you talk and you refer to your own personal experiences, there's a bias there. So we had to become aware of how we spoke, even about our personal history in terms of how that makes other people feel that don't have those same resources and that didn't have those same experiences.
Very interesting. Thank you.
Maureen, I also heard you talking about John Carroll. I got my master's at John Carroll.
All right, another blue streak. It's getting better and better.
Let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions? Well, I do have one. You had mentioned that you are interested in working with area businesses to try to, and I guess forgive my terminology, but to make room for individuals with disabilities and really help them find empowering and meaningful work. What would your first step be to working with the residents or with the businesses here in the community to try to engage them in that task?
Well, I guess the first thing would be to decide if they or to determine if they had any barriers to people with disabilities, whether that's, you know, getting in the door, whether that's a restroom situation, whether that's a hallway or walkway situation, or whether that's just a mindset. You know, some people just have it in their head that people with disabilities can't do the same amount of work. And that's not true, you know, there, everybody has a strength, everybody has a strength. No matter where you're from or what you're born with, you have a strength. So I think it would be taking inventory of both the physical barriers and maybe some of the preconceived notions that employers have about, you know, hiring people with disabilities.
I think that would be very interesting education to walk in with a checklist and say, here is a checklist of everything that your business would would need to be compliant, essentially.
A lot of businesses are, you know, I'm sure that they are compliant in that way. But I think that there's some kind of mental bias, you know, like I said, a preconceived notion that people are afraid to hire people with disabilities because they're not sure of their their stamina or their work ethic. I don't know. But I I think that would be the more interesting geek dive as to what's holding them back from hiring people with disabilities.
Thank you for that. We have a couple of minutes left. Is there anything you would like to share with us before you end for the evening?
I mean, I just hope that this is something you keep in mind if I'm not selected. I hope it's just kind of, it falls under this umbrella of inclusivity and diversity and trying to make, you know, Fairview a place where everyone feels welcome. So if I'm not, if I'm not chosen, I hope somebody else picks up that, you know, baton and kind of keeps that population in mind when making, you know, policy or deciding, you know, future action.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I appreciate your your time and your perspective. You've been one of the few who have talked about it from a disability standpoint. We've talked about vast differences, you know, ranging from race to religion to all the rest of it. But this is really the first time we've dove into disabilities. And it's it's been a little bit eye opening to think about that in terms of this Coalition. So I do appreciate that. We have a couple more interviews to do this evening and then we will be regrouping to figure out who we're going to nominate to the commit to the Coalition. So if you could grant us a little bit of of patience and we'll be taking a little bit of time, maybe two weeks to get back to you guys and let you guys know what we've decided.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Stay safe.
Do we have Dr. Benyon on yet this evening?
Hello.
Dr. Benyon, good to see you.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you so much for joining us. I don't know if you've watched the other interviews, but essentially what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask two standard questions. And then the mayor and council will offer some follow-up questions, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so the first question we have is what makes you a good fit for this task force?
Well, I think what makes me a great fit for the task force is that I have lived in Fairview for a pretty long time and since 2006. And so I'm able to look at it from the perspective of how is it that I was able to stay although I am a minority? And so what are those great things that you have and that you offer here that any family, regardless of race, would enjoy? Because the community, the things that I found when I first moved here are those things that also assisted in my staying as a longtime resident.
Thank you. What actionable steps would you like to make to make change here in our community?
The change that I would like to see is, what the the purpose of this task force is more inclusion, more of a welcoming environment, an environment where people are interacting with each other rather than still living in racial and other isolation that people feel welcome to, again, many of the assets that Fairview has to offer.
Thank you. Mayor Cooney, would you like to ask a couple of questions?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Dr. Benyon, thanks for joining us today. Thank you for your interest. You you talked about you'd like to see Fairview to be a more welcoming environment for 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 everybody. How would you go about achieving that? You know, I know you mentioned that we have a lot of nice assets here in the community. How would you, you know, personally like to see us become more welcoming? And how would, what what things do we have here that would be helpful in achieving that?
Well, one thing I noticed several years ago is that some of the flyers that are sent out, the calendar that's sent out, sometimes the racial diversity of of Fairview is not what people see. It's not in the pamphlets, it's not in the brochures. Another thing is that many of the wonderful activities that we've had, the cultural activities that we have, the fair, the nice fair that we have usually during the summer, that we find vendors who are diverse as well. So we're able to reach out to different, you know, more people will feel welcome to come. So if we have more diversity, even in the vendors that we offer, that offer their services. And let me see, another thing that, like a welcome package, I think if I can remember, I received like a welcome package. Might have been from my neighbors, but a a nice welcome package from someone. Even as we get new residents, then we have some way of just letting them know that they're special and that they can be included in the Fairview experience.
I appreciate those ideas. Those are great. And you said you've been here in town for 16 years?
Yes.
Okay, and and it sounded like you found the things, it sounded like you had some struggles maybe in at some point and but you other things led you to stay here. Could you, if you're comfortable expounding on that for us, would you? If you're not, I I can respect that as well.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, hopefully there's water under the bridge. That hopefully they know I'm a mainstay right now.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yes, but there were things, watermelons that were thrown in the yard. A lot of squirrels died in front of my house. There's a lot of things that indicated racial tolerant, the lack of racial tolerance. And but, you know, that's, the benefits of living in Fairview is far greater than the watermelon. That's that's what I would say. Because my neighbors are great, it's a very quiet, peaceful place. In those situations, when I went to the police department, they addressed the issue. Anytime I've had a problem, the few times that I've had a problem, the police department was very good in responding. So that's, you know, that that helps you right there. You know that, you know, they're going, they're going to do their job regardless of 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 race or ethnicity or whatever.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry you had to experience those things and I glad that you stayed. And I think, you know, the 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 beauty of Fairview Park is its people and you're part of that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you. Doctor, you mentioned the the summer event, the fair in Bulken Park. Do you have any additional input or suggestions that you may want to offer the the committee or the foundation? Because we're looking for avenues to improve the event every year. Do you have any additional information, anything that could be beneficial to the committee?
Well, the only thing that I would suggest again is finding a diverse group of vendors. You know, I know that you work with some of the same ones, but the reason I know is because because I go almost every year. And some are different. But if you reach out to more vendors and with different ethnicity, different cultural experiences, then you're going to draw more people. So if you reach into Cleveland perhaps and find some of those vendors who, you know, participate in those activities or even, you know, vendors who, you know, participate in those activities or even, you know, Avon or wherever they come from, the people, if you advertise as well, it may be in the Plain Dealer or somewhere else that where it has a farther outreach where people are willing to come in and, you know, offer their services and goods.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll see you at the fair.
Yes, you will. Eating, eating is.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, Council President.
Dr. Benyon.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for joining us. And I must say, reading your account of some things that that you've endured while while residing in Fairview Park really angered me. And I'm sorry that you had to encounter them here. And I want to thank you for hanging in there, for staying here. And and the point of this coalition is to is to bring this stuff out in the open and to talk about it and to solve these issues. So I want to thank you for for hanging in our city and it's all the better for having you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please go ahead.
And Dr. Benyon, you know, it's, I have to admit, when you were mentioning, you know, brochures and whatnot, I never thought about that, but you are 100% right. It has all sorts of, you know, pictures of white people, as I think about it. So that's something very simple, but at the same time, it leaves a mark on the person that doesn't match the brochures that are being generated. So that's, thank you for opening my eyes to that one little point. In addition to that, I guess I wanted to say, you said you're a veteran teacher. Where did you teach?
I teach in Cleveland.
Oh, okay, very good. And then I obviously, I know with Cleveland schools, you get much diversity training and have much experience in that that city. So what are some of the things that you could maybe bring from what you've learned in the Cleveland school systems with regard to diversity, equity and inclusion and try and incorporate into the Fairview Park, schools or cities as a whole?
Again, I, looking at cultural relevance, that if you're looking at school, the diversity in the curriculum, the topics that you that you cover, again, the people that you include in conversations, that so you're hearing many voices, so it's multi voiced and not just that of the dominant culture. I have been blessed to have taught in many cultural environments. I've taught in predominantly white environments as well as predominantly black environments. And even one of the schools in Cleveland was highly had Vietnamese, just all sorts of people. So I've had that cultural experience as well. And what you find is that people generally want a comfortable place where they feel wanted and also needed and that their contribution will be appreciated. So that's the commonality of in any environment. And again, I've taught in different places across the country, even in Hawaii. And so I was a preschool teacher in Hawaii and we had that same thing there is people want, they want a good education, they want to be included and they want to feel valued.
Okay, thank you. Well, Fairview Park must have something going forward if you left Hawaii to come here.
Oh, yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Does anyone have any more questions?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
All right, Dr. Benyon, first off, thank you for submitting your interest and joining us here tonight and sharing everything that you have. And first, I want to give you a compliment on the way you seem very positive. You know, you told the story how you ran into some things, but you maintained a positive attitude and it sounds like you're coming out well with it. And I'm sure our police chief, who is on the line here, appreciated the compliment about the police officers and the professionalism. So that's great to hear. And so my question with that is moving forward as a city and a community as a whole, do you see Fairview heading in a direction, you know, with with high hopes? Or are we trending in a positive direction moving forward?
I think the, just your ability to even attempt this, to try, I think you're going, you're moving faster than many cities, I believe, in this addressing the issues directly, rather than you being proactive rather than reactive, and I believe. And so, and it's that time that, you know, you hear those multiple voices, as I stated earlier. So I think you all are doing an exceptional job by, again, taking this on. This has to be, as far as being part of the dominant culture, to take this task on and say, we want to, everyone included in this, in Fairview, we want everyone in this community, we want everyone in the Fairview family to feel welcome. So I commend you for that. So you're doing a great job. And even you don't have to select me. I'm not saying that to be selected, but I'm just telling you, you're doing a beautiful job just by tackling this early.
Well, that's, that's great to hear. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the positivity. You know, thank you again for putting in tonight and joining us and I hope to see you at Summerfest.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Benyon. You have about a minute and a half left. Is there anything we haven't discussed yet that you would like to leave us with?
Well, the thing that I would, I would like to say is that the work that you have before you is will make just a great improvement in the experience that others have and that they will be able to enjoy what I have been able to enjoy, living here. That there is a stigma that African Americans and other minorities are not wanted in Fairview. That is, that is, I hear that, you know, from my colleagues from the east side or people that I go to church with in Cleveland. But my experience here, as I said, has, it's, well, I don't want to say, but it's been a, although I had those issues, it's been a wonderful experience. My neighbors are friendly, you know, it's, it's real nice. It's just, it's just a real nice place to live. And I don't, again, I'm not trying to, you don't have to choose me, but I'm just telling you, it's a real nice place to live. Really, it really is.
Thank you so much. We really took your time and thank you for sharing some of your more personal stories with us that gives us perspective that many of us here on council simply just don't have. And that's very wonderful that you were able to share those with us. We have actually one more interview. We're coming to the end of all of this tonight. And then we're going to go and figure out kind of how we are going to structure the coalition. And we should be within two to three weeks, letting everybody know how we have structured it. Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you all. God bless you and bless the work that you are doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, for our last interview, and please correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, is it Bunda Russ? I think you're on mute, just so you know. Bunda, thank you so much for joining us this evening. We appreciate you taking the time to apply and to interview for this coalition. Similar to what I've done for all of the other interviews, I'm going to ask you two standard questions and then the mayor and council will follow up with their own questions. Okay?
Thank you.
Can you hear me? So the first question is, what makes you think that you're a good fit for this task force?
First of all, I want to say thank you for looking at my application and giving me this opportunity. I'm very happy to hear about what's going to happen in Fairview. I've lived here now for 15 years. So I think that will qualify me as a resident of Fairview. I like this community. Everything is accessible to me, you know, from the rec center to the library, to the grocery store, from 480 to 490. I mean, it's, it's been a good experience. I have three children and one of them went all the way to Fairview School. My others go to a different school, but it's still in Fairview. I think I can bring a side of the other part of Fairview. There's, I'm originally from Africa. I'm from the Congo and I've migrated about 20 years now, have been in Ohio. So I think if you have an addition of the francophone anglophone that I am, could be a good addition for your coalition.
Thank you for sharing that with us. What actionable steps would you like to see taken here in Fairview to make a positive change in our community?
If they could have a, like, more like a welcoming, I don't know how to explain that. Okay, I'll just give my experience. Since I had small children here in the Fairview, I spent a lot of time at the rec center. I'm like, I used to be there all the time. So I think if we could have a little bit of diversity at the rec center, that would be good. Because sometime I'll come in and, you know, they receive me in a certain way or the reaction, I'll just give you one of my personal reaction, they'll ask me, I'll have my ID, I'm trying to enter in, and they'll ask me week after week, I'm like, okay, I know there's a lot of members, but you cannot see me every weekend. There's not many minority in our community. So maybe at the level of the rec center, if you can add a little bit of diversity, could be African American, Middle Eastern, Asian, but just a little bit of diversity in that area, I think that I'll say.
Thank you. That's very good feedback. Mayor Cooney, would you like to ask some questions?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Russ, thanks for joining us today and thank you for your interest. What do you, you know, you're talking about you'd like to see a little more diversity, maybe within the ranks of the city employees. Is there, is there anything, I mean, else that you would identify as a primary goal of the coalition? And if you have something else in mind, how would you go about helping the coalition achieve that?
I know whenever my kids were younger, I was not able to get involved a lot. But now my kids are teenagers. So if there's anything I could do to help, this is going to be, this year was my fifth event. So I've added something in the community. I have an event that I organize with a group of several volunteers every year during Black History Month. So that event, it's happened at the rec center. I've had it, I try to encourage that people to come to Fairview and see that we have some cultures during Black History Month, we do an event, we have food, we have speakers, we talked a little bit about the different background of certain African group, African American, we have music. And it's, it's not just only for African or African American, we have different group who comes and they have a chance to try the different food or the different culture. So that's something with a group of several friends and support that we've brought to Fairview. So it's been the past five years. This year, we're not able to do it due to COVID, so it was a Zoom. But the event has been very successful. You know, we started with 65, the last event, we had about 200 people who come in and it's a family event. So everybody's welcome. So that's something that I wanted to add to the community that I've lived in. It's been a good community for me and my children. And I wanted to share that experience with others.
Well, thank you for that, for your efforts there and for sharing that with our community. And we look forward to having you share some other things going forward. So thank you. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have five, if I may. Ms. Ross, thank you for submitting your interest in tonight and joining us here tonight, you know, and sharing your stories. It's definitely appreciated. And I actually have have two questions. The first one is that the event that you just referenced, because I've never been and I've never attended. So if you get that going again in the future, I would just ask, would you just let notify council in advance? Because I think that'd be a great thing, you know, to help, help spread, you know, going forward if you're able to get that going. Because it sounds like a great event. And so then the other question I have, and I hate to repeat the question that I just asked the last person, but I feel like it's a good, good question here, is that moving forward for Fairview Park, in your eyes, do you see Fairview Park trending in a better direction where it's more positivity on the horizon going forward?
Yes, first of all, about this coalition is the greatest thing. We really needed that. Definitely. Fairview has evolved. I remember when I moved in, it was just more a older population, but yes, changed. And now we have even younger people moving in, like the guy, the family next to me, they're only 26 years old. So I definitely see Fairview moving forward. It's a great community. You have a mix of different groups. And we have so much, we have so much to offer in our community. So I definitely see positive.
That's great. That's great to hear. I appreciate everything, you know, that you're doing and you're going to continue to do. So thank you again for joining and sharing with us here tonight.
By the way, have a good night.
Yes, go ahead, Maureen.
Yes, Ms. Russ, I know you mentioned you're an involved member at Messiah Lutheran Church. I was curious, has Messiah Lutheran, have they touched upon this diversity, equity and inclusion issue? And if so, what are some of the things you have, you know, gathered from them or gained from them that you might be able to bring to the coalition?
Actually, the pastor, Pastor Seth, recommended me to join the coalition. He's like, hey, have you heard? I'm like, yes, I saw something Dr. Carolyn Benyon mentioned to me. And so that's how I actually sent my application. And I think it's due to Pastor Seth from Messiah Lutheran. What would I gain? I volunteer at Messiah for the past 10 years. All the event that they have to bring the community together, I try to be a participant. So just the experience that we've had working as a group and support that you can, anything is possible if you work together.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Any further questions? Well, I have a question for you, Ms. Russ. So one of the things that you had mentioned was you'd like to see more diversity at the rec center. And I believe in your application, you had even mentioned that in our teachers, which just to be clear, the city does not control our schools, that's a whole separate entity, but our teachers, our police department, our firefighters, and even some of the businesses, you'd like to see greater diversity. And I guess I'm going to ask what is a very ignorant question on my part, so please forgive me for that. But if our population is 94% white, how could we encourage the 6% that is still here that is is not, and those outside of our community to come in and apply for these jobs? You know, what is it about our community that we could tout that encourages them to want to be here? Or how can we better structure these jobs to encourage them? I'm just curious what your expertise or your opinion of that would be?
That's a great question. And yeah, I know a lot of people, when I told them I live on the west side, they was like, oh, it's the population is, you know, a certain population. But for me, what attracted me with actually Fairview is the location of everything. I mean, you have a great library, the rec center is awesome for all age and all group. It's an amazing program during the summer. So, I mean, the grocery store, we are close to every highway we can think of, close to, if you want to shop somewhere else, you're not far from Crookville. I mean, you're close to everything, even downtown. So I think that's, I would definitely encourage people who I may not be familiar with Fairview of what, where we are located. The location is really good. And the homes too, the price range of home is affordable. So that's what I'll say. And you actually, I know you mentioned like for the school, you guys don't have that, you know, power to change sort of thing. But even at the library, I've been here for 15 years. I was happy to found, was it maybe But even at the library, I've been here for fifteen years. Um, I was happy to found, uh, was it maybe two or three years ago? There was an African American gentleman working in the library. I mean, I've been here forever, never seen one. So just this little, you know, changes. And maybe at the RAC Center, some of the teenager could be maybe a little bit more involved. And I'll ask my son too. Um, so I think that's, that's what I could say. I hope I will, I answer your question, you know?
Yeah, no, that's, that's very good insight. Um, and like I said, I forgive this, forgive that it was a little bit ignorant of a question. I'm, I'm trying to learn as much as anybody else this evening. Um, I do appreciate that answer and it's given me a lot of food for thought. In the last couple of minutes that you have, is there anything that you wanted to bring forward to Counsel and to the administration that we haven't talked about yet?
No, I think you covered pretty much everything. I'm happy that you contacted me and um, that I'm available. Let me know whether I'm picked. If I'm not picked, I would like to participate in the community in anything. Uh, and I'll contact uh, the Counsel. I don't know who I need to contact for the event, but it's been a success for the past five years. And I think we're gonna continue. And we are using the resources which is local, Fairview buildings, everything. So, um, you know, just to encourage our community.
We appreciate you doing that work even outside of this coalition. Um, it's it's such important work. We um, we, you were our last interview, so hooray, we've talked to everybody. Um, we're gonna take a little bit of time and digest everything that we have learned and everybody that we've talked to. And we will be going through a nomination process in the next couple of weeks, and then we will definitely let you know. Um, and definitely, if you want to email myself or Councilman Berger or even uh, Liz Westbrooks is our Clerk of Counsel, she can let all of Counsel know. Um, we're all very interested now in attending your event, so we appreciate you bringing that significantly more into our forefront.
The food is really good, too.
Always, so always something to look forward to. So, thank you so much for your time and I hope you have a great evening.
Good time to you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations, guys. We have completed all of our interviews. Um, I don't know about you guys, but I'm feeling very excited and empowered about what we have learned and the people that we have talked to. Um, I think we have some very difficult decisions ahead of us. Um, but those will be decisions for another evening. I encourage you guys all to take a look at the notes that you took, to re-watch the videos and to maybe start thinking about um, who are your top performers who you would like to see on the coalition so that we can have a very informed discussion uh, when it comes to that. That being said, I'd like to open the floor if anybody has any questions or comments uh, before we close out committee this evening.
Councilwoman Waring?
Yes, Councilwoman Adler.
I was just curious, because I know Counsel gets picked and picks and Mayor Cooney gets picks. I was curious if we were going to all meet together or submit them separately? And if so, would this discussion take place in executive session or what is the procedure after this, I guess?
So funny you should ask. I actually have an email sitting in draft to um, Mike and to Pat to basically say, let's get together and figure out how we're going to do this, because we, we need to do it in public. Uh, we cannot do it in an executive session that's already been um, asked and answered. So what I'd like to do is make sure that we are doing it in as orderly and professional a way as we can. So I wanted to connect Pat, um, I'll be sending you that email shortly, connect to just make sure that, you know, everybody has their plan of how we're going to do this. Uh, and we will bring it to Counsel at the next committee meeting. I'll just discuss that with um, Counsel President and the mayor to make sure everybody's on the same page before we enter that process. Is that fair?
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
Herewoman?
Yes, please, Council President.
Yeah, I just want to thank you again for for handling this, this entire interview process in such an orderly and um, thoughtful way. Including uh, how we're gonna carry forward from here.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's been a fantastic experience. Thank you guys for trusting me with that.
Thank you.
Great job, Sarah.
Madam Chair, when, when were you thinking about having a meeting on this?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Of course.
When were you thinking about meeting to discuss the uh, the selections?
So, you know, we have the opportunity to call a special meeting. I don't know if that's necessary. Um, why don't you, Mike and I chat maybe tomorrow or the next day and figure out um, how quickly we need to move and what the procedure will be so we can bring it back as quickly as possible? Would that be agreeable?
Yeah, that's agreeable. I just don't know how I would be involved in your discussion. I mean, you guys vote. Well, you guys vote separately, so I don't know how I would be involved in your discussion.
Well, you get a certain number of picks and we get a certain.
No, I understand that.
It shouldn't be the same picks, right?
Yeah.
First off, I don't think we've ever, we've even spelled out in the ordinance who gets five picks and who gets four picks.
I think it is actually. You guys get five and I get four.
It's spelled on the ordinance, okay.
I believe it was spelled out.
Yeah, it is.
I can double check it. But yeah, I think it's important that we at least have a, an understanding as to how Counsel will come out this and the administration will come at this. Um, so if we can chat about that and bring it back to the greater committee, that would be appreciated.
So that will be.
And Chair.
So that would be the, the next meeting in two we, in three weeks.
That would be, that would be my thought, yes. Um, if we have different thoughts, we can talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Um, Councilman Minnick first, please.
Thank you. You better devote sufficient time so that we can discuss each, each of the twenty applicants.
I agree. I very much agree. Thank you. Councilwoman Adler.
I was curious if um, if Mayor Cooney, if he were to let us, since he's one man, he would let us know his four picks. Um, then we would remove them from our list of twen-, you know, of twenty-some, so that we know they are already going to be chosen.
That's true.
That, that, that was my intention, but I'm gonna wait to see what Sarah sends and uh, but we'll, we'll talk about it. But my intention was to make my selection like uh, selections and then those are individuals that you wouldn't have to consider that might uh, move your process along a little faster.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, I think.
But I'll, I'll take a look to see what uh, you know, see what, I mean, I'm happy to talk about it, but I, again, I, from a, you know, I don't have any vote on Counsel and I don't know.
Oh, you went on.
Being involved, being involved in that discussion, you know, so, but we, we can talk about it a little more uh, you know, later. So thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments on the coalition or um, the city's issue of systemic racism and our response? Then I will close out uh, Local Government and Community Services at eight twenty-eight PM. Thank you.
Um, real quick, before we, before uh, Bridget gets started on finance, is anybody else possibly interested in taking five minutes?
Are you buying?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Any issues?
Sounds good.
Okay, so it's eight twenty-eight now, come back at, we'll just say eight thirty-five to make it an easy number.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right, it's eight thirty-five. All right. So Finance Committee will start at eight thirty-five tonight. The first item to discuss is Ordinance twenty-one eighteen, authorizing RFP and agreement for the Bain Park Restrooms. This is for the relocation and reconstruction of an ADA compliant public restroom closer to the existing playground and pavilion area. Um, the total cost is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents. And we were awarded a grant for half of that. And our half of that will come from Fund Two-Sixty, the Permanent Improvement Fund. Um, this has been requested that we pass it on second read, which would be our next meeting on April fifth. And I'm assuming we're doing that so that construction can begin during the warmer weather. Um, Mary Kay, do you have anything else for this?
No, I just appreciate your consideration. This is a unique opportunity to use a new type of construction. It'll be very informative for us. Uh, the um, the project is um, has a more modular aspect. And so being able to issue a request for proposals is very helpful, because it's not something that we can issue specifications for as easily as we could for other road projects or other um, civil projects. So really appreciate your kind attention to it this evening. Thank you.
Sure. Does anyone have any questions about Ordinance twenty-one eighteen? Yes?
I just wanted to ask the uh, Director. The ordinance says uh, delivery of, delivery of materials for the restroom, is this? I'm, I'm guessing that this is just for the uh, preliminary materials, concrete, underground, stuff like that, not the actual um, you know, we haven't even uh, we haven't really even discussed the structure itself.
So this, that's a great question, Council President. So what we are asking for is our engineer to create plans and specifications for the slab that the structure would sit on. And we're asking for this RFP to solicit proposals from companies that would provide the materials. Then the materials would be delivered here. And then our contractor who has installed the slab would assemble them. So for example, um, you know, the block would come, uh, the roofing materials would come and then it would be assembled. So it's not, it's not modular in the sense that you would see it being driven down the highway like you see some homes, but it is modular in that the contractor doesn't, isn't tasked with coming up with quantities, coming up with materials, it'll all be available to them. So we think we're really going to uh, realize some efficiencies and costs, because they don't have to spend all that time tracking down the materials and quantities that they need. It'll all be provided for them. So I think it'll be a really appealing project uh, and, and cost effective.
Okay, so this is for the materials for the entire project?
Interior as well. So we're, they'll provide fixtures, lighting, sinks, everything in a really vandal-proof manner so that it can be, you know, safe and sturdy for the long term. So yes. You're welcome.
Councilwoman King, if I may?
Yes, please.
Um, Director Costello, do you have a design or plans or can you describe to us what it is that we are purchasing with this money? Because I, I mean, I haven't seen any of that and perhaps it was in the grant proposal. Um, but understanding really what it is that we're purchasing here would be really appreciated.
Absolutely. And we'll send you an email with um, uh, some of the information that we included in our presentation to Parks and Rec and in the Planning Commission. So uh, we can send you um, So, uh, we can send you, um, a, a, a picture of a potential structure that we have in mind. Um, of course, with the understanding that after this RFP process, that might change up a little bit once we have selected a vendor. So that's absolutely possible. It's a one-room facility that would lock, obviously. So it's going to be smaller than the previous. We just don't feel that two separate restrooms is needed at the playground area of Bain. And, uh, we think that one room suffices for, for these facilities. So it'll be a little smaller footprint, um, and, uh, but much more modern and, um, attractive. We'll get you some images, we'll get you some things that we had in mind for it. But again, with the caveat that that might change after we make our selection through this process.
Thank you, I would appreciate that. If you made a presentation to Parks and Rec, a copy of that presentation would help us to really understand what it is that you're trying to do. Thank you.
You've, you've got it. Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Um, yes, Mary Kay, um, is there a hopeful timeframe on this? That's another very good question. We're, we've made some calls out to some, um, vendors in the business to get an idea of, you know, materials and delivery time. And there are some delays due to COVID. So depending on when we can finalize all of our authorizations, you know, we, we, what we may see is the pad going in this fall. And then as weather allows, letting the contractor have a, a really wide berth from fall to through spring to, to complete the, to complete the project in and around weather. And again, we think that that will be really attractive for a contractor who can continue to employ, um, their workers and, uh, work in, at the end of the season perhaps more. So we think, we think spring of twenty-twenty-two is a reasonable completion time.
And then I know you said it's going to be a one-room thing. Um, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to get into the specifics, but I would think it wise to include like a changing table, those sort of things. Cause it seemed like whenever I'd get my kids to the park, that's when they would decide to do their business, you know? So, um, we'd rather change in a restroom than on a picnic table, so.
I agree. Uh, and it's so funny because one of the questions now that we talked about was how do you install a vandal-proof changing table? And what we hear is that our layout might not have that type of room to be AD and keep our ADA compliant. So being ADA compliant was a priority. Uh, it's something that we feel when we're using ODNR funds, grant funds, that we want to maintain, um, ADA compliance. And we're hearing that putting a changing table in, um, will impact that, um, accessibility. And so while we, we're, we're attempting to make every effort, I just want to caution that that might not be feasible, um, in context of, of, of staying ADA compliant.
Okay, well, I have it on record that I did request it.
I know, I, we are going to try, but it's, it, it looks like it might be a little difficult. Considering the footprint we, we need to stay in to, to stay within our engineers. So I, I, I am going to try, but it's, it's, it's looking more and more difficult.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, thank you for bringing it up.
All right, any additional questions about Ordinance twenty-one eighteen? Okay, then I would like to make a motion to have this up, um, for second read and final passage next, um, next meeting, April fifth. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm gonna vote yes, and Greg?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have Ordinance twenty-one nineteen, and it kind of goes with Ordinance twenty-one twenty. And we have the Chief here to help us out with this. It's, um, our agreements with the City of North Olmsted for jail services and police dispatch services. Um, Chief, you really gave a great explanation about this during our budget hearings. But now that we have the, um, attachments with it, there are some questions probably that go along with that. So I'll ask if anyone has questions before I ask mine.
Actually, uh, Councilwoman King, if I may?
Sure.
I know there's a lot of people who are interested in this topic. Hopefully, they've tuned in this evening. Could we just start with an overview of what is being proposed? Um, just in, I mean, this is a pretty big proposal that we're entertaining, and I think maybe that would be good if somebody in the public is searching for that.
Sure. Last year, we started looking for partners to take over our jail services because our jail being built in nineteen sixty-seven was, um, is, is woefully, uh, out of touch as far as, um, being an updated facility to house prisoners. We're currently a twelve-day facility. As we looked to, uh, meet standards, uh, it came pretty, it became pretty obvious that our, uh, the cost, uh, to, to fix up a, a, uh, fix up the jail was prohibitive. And, uh, we started looking for partners to, that would handle our long-term jail, um, needs. Uh, surprisingly, not a whole lot of people came running up. Uh, the jail, the jail is, uh, it is what it is. It's a, it's a necessary evil of our, of our trade. While we were looking at other communities, uh, we were looking at cities, um, around here and a little farther out, um, where they charged one hundred and twenty-five dollars a night, uh, for, uh, a prisoner to stay. Uh, some communities like, uh, Strongsville or North Royalton, it'd be about a thirty-minute drive just to get a prisoner there. So our, our officers would be out of the city almost two hours just to, just to transport a prisoner. Uh, when we looked at the impact that, uh, keeping our current jail and doing outfit fitting, we also took what the, the impact it had on the community. Where for every time we have a prisoner here, uh, for, uh, twenty-four hours, it means that a police officer is off the road for eight hours. And, uh, when you add it all up, uh, in a year for the approximately two hundred prisoners that we house every year, it, it was over sixty thousand dollars, the financial impact to the city. So, uh, as we were talking to some of these, uh, other cities, um, the thought of our, uh, dispatch also, uh, being changed over. Uh, currently, we are, it's of the best of my knowledge, and I, I, I'm pretty sure this is an accurate, uh, statement. We are the last police department in the Cuyahoga County that has a police officer sitting at desk, answering nine-one-one phone calls, working the radio. Um, when we, and traditionally, it's an officer in charge, a sergeant. Um, in the past, prior to the twelve-hour shift, a lieutenant. Uh, so when our officers are out on the road and they need a, uh, advice or a supervisory deci- decision, uh, many times they have to call into the, call into dispatch and the, uh, officer in charge has to go based on what he's told or she's told. Um, so, uh, when we look at the way we are doing things, which was fine maybe sixty years ago, uh, we need to come into the, the twenty-first century, uh, get our, uh, the best way to get our supervisors out on the road is to, uh, basically get somebody to dispatch for us. When we're looking at our dispatch area, it's, it's forty years old. Uh, it'll take a well over a hundred thousand dollars to, to rehab it. Uh, when we were talking with the other cities about taking over or other, uh, dispatch centers, um, we learned that in some instances, it would cost between a, a quarter million just to have an opportunity for another entity to dispatch. And then it'd be about a quarter million a year, uh, for them to dispatch. And that had nothing to do with our jail services. Uh, fortunately, our part, our neighbors to the west, North Olmsted, uh, recently rehabbed their dispatch center. Uh, they have the same computerated dispatch, uh, program that we use. We share the same radio frequency. They're five miles down the road. They were looking for a partner. It just seemed like a good fit. Uh, so they were, uh, nice enough to, um, uh, work with us in also accepting our, our, our two hundred some odd prisoners for overnight stays in addition to doing our, our dispatch for us.
Great. Thank you. Um, I have a question for you about, um, first on the prisoner housing services?
Yes, ma'am.
Will we still have a doctor on call then, or no? Well, North Olmsted handled all of that stuff.
That would be North Olmsted. That doesn't mean, uh, so what we would do, we transitioned to a six-hour facility, which means, uh, again, between fi- uh, we arrest between five hundred and seven hundred people a year. Of those five hundred and seven hundred to seven hundred, uh, more, most of them will be brought in, booked, processed, and then released on a bond or to whatever agency they had, they had the warrant that it is on. Um, the only people that would be taken over in North Olmsted would be long-term, would be, say, a domestic violence arrest. It has to see a judge, may have probation violation, the occasional felony. Um, so, so once they left our care, then there would be North Olmsted responsibility, uh, to, for, for medical, as far as like, you know, giving them aspirin, things like that. Uh, we would still be responsible if, say, we arrested somebody for bank robbery and they were in, in our custody, uh, and North Olmsted was housing them before they saw the judge, and they had a medical issue. Uh, we would be responsible for their medical care if they were taken us for the hospital. We'd have an officer sit on them. Uh, but again, those are few, thankfully, those are few and far between. But we, we would be responsible for long, for the expense of medical care.
Okay. Um, and then number four in this, um, it says that they will install any equipment or hardware to allow Fairview Park, Park Officers to appear via video, um, for any kind of court or legal proceedings. Do you not have that stuff already set up?
We do, but, uh, the, the way it, the, currently, if we have somebody in our custody and they spend the night, we take them to our, uh, our interview room where we have a closed-circuit hookup that is just between us and Rocky River Court. What North Olmsted would, would facilitate for us is that we would not have to send an officer over to North Olmsted to appear in video. So they would do a three-way, they would, uh, have the technology to do a three-way connection. So the prisoner would still be in North Olmsted. Our officer or detective would still be here. And then we could talk to Rocky River Court that way.
Okay. All right, and then on both of these, um, there's a, the end, this is about insurance, that we need additional insurance. Um, is that something what we, you might not know this, the mayor might have to answer. Will we have to have a special ordinance to amend our prior insurance that we passed last year?
No, I don't think we do. Uh, I believe, uh, I know Director Riley spoke to, um, McGowan about having them added as an additional insured. And, uh, I actually believe he's even secured those certificates or, you know, will be able to. And I do not believe there's any increase in the premium. So that shouldn't affect, uh, that ordinance. And I, and I also, uh, when we do pass that ordinance, there is a little bit of, um, additional funds included in the ordinance in case, uh, there's an increase in coverage during the course of the year. So, um, so I think that's a, those, that cost is built in there. Uh, but I don't know the specifics. If there is an increase, I will check with, uh, Director Riley and Director Single to see if there is, so I can confirm that. But when I talked to Tim, he had said it, he said it's not an issue that, I mean, that's, you know, so I didn't, I don't, it's just a, there's not a problem with having them added as an insured? And I don't think there's additional cost, but I will confirm that.
Okay, but even though we're adding an additional service to be covered, we wouldn't need to amend that. I, because that ordinance was for that very specific policy, wasn't it? I don't know, I.
I think it's just a general liability policy. There just is an additional insured, but I, I, I don't think it's, um, you know, we still have, we'll still need to have coverage on our jail because it would be a six-hour facility as opposed to a twelve-day facility.
Okay.
So that coverage, um, you know, could still be in effect. And I think it's just then our general policy, we're adding North Olmsted, uh, and vice versa. So I don't think it's, um, I don't, I don't think there's an additional cost, but again, I'll have to check and let you know.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, then I have a question. Um, the agreement for the dispatch service doesn't have an effective date listed. When, when was this gonna start?
Uh, well, I know we, I, I think Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, we were, July first would be a target date if possible. Uh, we didn't have an effective date due to, you know, obviously, um, we need your approval and, and, uh, Council in North Olmsted as well. So, uh, I, I think, I know the Chief has been talking to his counterpart in North Olmsted and, and the, uh, staff there and working on things. And so I think July first would be, would be our target date, Chief.
The, the, the one good thing about going to North Olmsted is because we share similar programming and radio frequencies, the, the changeover will be a, a, a little easier than if we were just going to someplace totally new. Uh, but yeah, July first would be ideal for us, please.
Great. Any other questions on either Ordinance twenty-one nineteen or twenty-one twenty?
Adam, Chair?
Yes.
Chief, would we possibly have a, uh, a little tour of the facility in North Olmsted? I was there years ago, but not lately.
I, I, I think we can arrange it, Councilman.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.
Councilwoman King, if I may?
Yes.
Um, first of all, please, Chief Shepherd, um, if we could all get a non-booking tour, um, that would be wonderful, if we could get an exit pass on our way out too.
We'll do, we'll do what we can.
Okay. Uh, the second question I have for you is, has the police union issued a statement on this? Are they on board? Um, you know, where does that stand? Are we gonna face any issues from that standpoint?
Before I, before I got on, uh, promoted as Chief, I rode with a lot of our officers. Um, this is something that they, uh, the jail in particular was a, was a point of contention. Uh, they, they really, really recognize that, that the resources at times are being wasted because them having to come off the road to do prisoner care. The other, the other resounding, uh, point was that they want supervisors on the road. They want, they want the guidance, they want the accountability. And our supervisors also want to have the ability to, to be there when an officer does something well, to say, "Good job." And when an officer needs correction, to make that correction right away as opposed to finding out an hour later or two days later that's, that Officer Smith made a mistake, when it could be easily corrected right away.
Thank you for that perspective.
Any additional questions?
I don't have a question, I was just gonna make a quick comment. Um, I, I think, I think I would send in the budget hearings, but I think it's a great thing. I think it's gonna be a big win, uh, for the city, the residents, the officers, and the inmates. Um, so, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of good things coming from it and it, it came a lot sooner than I thought it was, to be, to be honest. So I think you've done an amazing job. And I've talked to several, uh, Fairview Park Police Officers who have, uh, positive views on it. So, uh, so thanks for all the hard work on it, it's really appreciated.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, anything additional? All right, well, I do think this is a well-thought-out, well-researched plan, and it's gonna be great for our city. But because it's such a big change, I would like to leave it in committee so that if anyone in the community wants to get in touch with anyone before we pass it, um, I'm gonna make a motion then to keep both of these ordinance, um, put them for second read and then remain in committee so that if anything, anyone has anything additional, like, we can talk about it again, and then we can pass it on third read. So second return to committee on Ordinance twenty-one nineteen. Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes. And Greg?
Yes.
And then ordinance 2120, second read and return to committee. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes. And Greg?
Yes.
Perfect. Both of them are passing. Thank you so much, chief, for all your time and staying up with us this late.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, council.
Um, all right. The next order is ordinance
Thank you, chief. Sorry. Thank you. Sorry, sorry, Madam Chair.
It's fine. Next up is ordinance 2114, repeal and replace the H-back maintenance and service agreement. Um, I did have this on second subsequent third, but we need to amend it because the section numbers are numbered incorrectly. We have two section fours. So I would like to make a motion to amend the second section four to section five and then section five to section six.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe we also need to fix some typo, a typo in the title. Maintenance spelled incorrectly.
Oh, is it?
Yes, missing an I.
Yes. I did not catch that. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right. So I would like to amend maintenance and numbering of the sections. Does anyone have any other questions on that one? Kind of straightforward. All right. Then I'd like to make a motion to have they amended 2114 on third and final reading. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes. And Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Then the last thing on mine is issue of budget discussion. I wanted to leave this in committee for two reasons. First of all, we discussed during the budgets that we were going to have directors come and give us quarterly updates. So it looks like June 15th probably would be a good committee goal for that. And then during this process, a couple members of council spoke to me about making the process a little smoother and a little less confusing. So I'd like to leave the budget issue in committee so that maybe after summer break, when we come back in fall, we can discuss if changes can be made and we could discuss it with Director Single and the mayor to see how we can make it a little less confusing for everyone.
Do you have any specific, Madam Chair, any specifics as to the, what was confusing and what suggestions people might have?
Um, yes. One of the, instead of doing it by fund number, by doing it just by department instead. So we wouldn't have to flip between the two, between all of the pages. If we could just have like the rec center, all the money in and all the money out and have it together rather than listing fund by fund. Cause like when you look at the general fund, you have so many departments coming out of the general fund, say. And another suggestion was to not have it on Saturdays anymore. Have the big budget hearing on Saturdays to try and find a different way to do it. Those were two of the, two of the things that came out of it.
Okay. Yeah, we just, just to give us some time to think about it. So when we do have the discussion, we have, you know, I
Oh, sure. So I'm sure as, as everyone thinks about it, they'll come up with some other two, but those are the two, top two things that were discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
A question.
Yeah.
You said quarterly updates and you said June 15th? Did I hear that right? June 15th?
Yeah, yeah, I just picked that. Yeah.
Is that, is that a Tuesday?
Oh, is it? I didn't think so.
You, you, June of 21, right?
Yeah. Oh, well, then June 14th.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and yes, we, your, your comments on the, I would be up for, for trying to expand search for days other than the Saturday. So I think that's a great recommendation. So thank you for, for bringing that up. I think it's a good idea and I got June 14th marked. Thank you.
So I would like to make a motion to keep the budget discussion in committee. Mike?
Yes.
Brian? Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes. And Greg?
Yes.
All right. And that is all for the finance committee and we will conclude at 9:05 PM.
Council President? Sorry. Thank you. I have a point of order. If we could take a second? I did not take a vote in my committee to leave the issue of systemic racism in committee. Could I do so now? Thank you. Mike? Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to leave the issue of systemic racism in committee. Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Bridgette?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero. Council President, thank you for allowing me that point of order.
All, we have our committee chairs this evening. You did a fantastic job as usual. Okay, boards and commissioners reports, councilmen similarly.
Uh, nothing tonight, thanks.
Bill?
Nothing.
Maureen?
Nothing, thank you.
Sarah?
Nothing, thank you.
Bridgette?
Nothing for that.
Greg?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Table, Brian?
Uh, nothing tonight, thanks.
Bill?
I'd just like to commend, Councilman Waring on her fantastic job with this coalition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen?
Um, yes, if I may, a resident, Rita Soto, she shared with me that some of our meetings have closed caption and some do not. I didn't know if that was true or not. She's hard of hearing and likes it when we have closed caption. So I was just curious if that would be something we could make sure we always do.
Anything for Rita Soto?
I can set, I think there is a way on the YouTube settings to, where you can set that and I didn't, I don't, I never, never even occurred to me to do that. So I will personally send her an email tonight and let her know that I will get that fixed.
Okay. And she also likes it when she sees Brian Simmerly instead of just hears his voice.
I'm a fan, Brian.
Just wanted to get to know Brian. And another thing, as I'd mentioned, I think in our last meeting, Mary Murray, one of the women that drives for Meals on Wheels, she mentioned that addresses were hard to find when they were on a recent run. And I know Director Costello, you know, jumped on that and said she was going to talk to the building department about that. She since has mentioned that some other drivers have expressed the same concern over some of the addresses at places they go. So I didn't know if there might be a way of having the Meals on Wheels people somehow have a direct communication with the building department so they can share or jot down any addresses that they have found difficulty, you know, finding, if that would be possible. Director Costello?
Absolutely. That's, that's a great idea and whenever they can leave me out of the mix, it'll be more efficient, but certainly the Meals on Wheels coordinators are here every week and I'll have that conversation with them this week.
Thank you. Yeah, it made sense and those people obviously are, you know, they know the ones that are tricky to find. And then lastly, just an inquiry, I guess in general, I know we're doing spring cleaning now. We have very limited control over people's backyards. Would that be accurate with how they choose to keep their backyard? I've had a, a resident complaining a lot about, you know, a neighbor that has basically the ripple effect of everybody that surrounds this particular backyard is now putting up fences because they don't like to see the mess that's in their yard. Is, I mean, how much control do we have over backyards? When people are just messy, having old tires and other such things, you know, that are eyesores.
Property violation.
Well, we, we, we have some control over that. A lot of it's a timing issue.
Okay.
And we give people an opportunity to to try to correct the violation and assuming there is a violation.
Okay.
You know, you'd have to, you know, if you cheer that with the building department, they can take a look and, you know,
Right.
talk to the person.
Yeah, I talked to the building, but they, they were familiar with the house. You know, it's situations where somebody claims this large tire that's leaning against their garage, you know, on the side of the house is a piece of exercise equipment that I can say this large tire hasn't moved in a year. You know, it's just an eyesore and that now they're getting more tires in the backyard. So obviously the neighbor is getting a little bit irritated. So I'll talk to the building department some more about it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes my roundtable.
Maureen? Sarah?
Thank you. I'll try to keep it brief as I know I've dominated most of our last several meetings. My question is for Mayor Cooney or Director Costello. I know that our contract with Republic Services is coming to an end in just a couple of months. When, when and how are you intending to tell us how we're going to proceed with rubbish removal, understanding that we've got only a few more weeks before that contract becomes something more of an issue?
I believe Director Costello, I think you've shared something with Councilwoman King with respect to that.
So, right, Your Honor, that is true and it's my understanding that there is a, one last year remaining on our contract to take advantage of an extension. And so we are hopefully going to have a draft of an ordinance to city council for April 5th meeting to look at that renewal. It doesn't take an effect until June, but we'd like to get that up to you and have that reviewed. So we're working on a draft of that ordinance. Our renewal for this year is a really low rate in comparison to the rates that I've seen being offered on new contracts. Today I had a conversation with the county solid waste district coordinator who collects that information and she just today gave dated list of newly bid refuse contracts. So I can update you on it to that on the 5th as well. And if you are interested in the analysis that we did for in-house collection, I can share that. I think we've circulated that to city council, but I can share that again. So we, we know that taking a look at automated collections is in our best interest, our best use and as stewards of these public resources. So we'll keep you advised. We're watching carefully what Parma Heights is doing that the, the community, we piggybacked our contract off of. So they're going to bid shortly. They have not gone to bid yet. Their contract is in effect to the end of 2021. So we will carefully watch that bidding process and the folks at the county solid waste district will help us in that regard also. So I hope, I hope that answers some of those questions and I'll keep you in the loop as what we find.
Thank you. I know garbage is a very hot topic here in this city. So I look forward to seeing that recommendation and contract coming through on the meeting for April 5th. Thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
And that concludes my roundtable. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah, for bringing that up. Bridgette?
Thank you. Um, I thought that I did share it with council, the, the information Mary K passed to me. Did, did I or did I not? I
I know I received it. The info was outsourced.
Yeah. Okay. I wanted to make sure. I'm sorry.
Didn't receive it.
Okay. I will get it to Liz then and I will make, and I'll let her cascade it out to everyone then to make sure everyone has it.
Thank you.
Um, and I wanted to tell Sarah what a great job she did. We really got some great applicants for our coalition and you did a great job keeping everything organized. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I just have one question for Mayor Cooney. I was looking over the codified ordinances and section 109 is talking about a board of ethics. And I was wondering, do you have a timeline or are you going to establish a board of ethics for the city?
I have to take a look at that.
Okay.
So I'll let you know.
Perfect. Thanks. That's all I have.
Greg?
Yeah, I, I've been asked by a couple of people when the construction will start for the Vulcan Park trail that's supposed to come in connecting the Ball Diamond.
I'll take that one. The grant application has not been awarded, although we are very confident that it is going to be. And I think we're looking at the next, I, I would hope in April, we would, we would get word of that award and I hope as early as possible. You know, it's a short construction season these days, so we'll keep everyone advised as to as soon, as soon as we hear about that award, moving forward to create bids, bid specifications and plans.
Okay. You said April of this year, so is the goal to try to get it done this year?
That would be my goal. Unless the, unless the contract is so delayed in getting to us that, that we, it's just not feasible, we would have to work on, you know, a spring project.
Okay. All right. That's all I have and great job with everyone with the interviews and Sarah, you did a great job and Bridgette, you did a great job too. Everyone, don't want to leave you hanging on your committee to report tonight as well.
Thanks. Thanks, Greg.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Hey, you know, I just, I just want to say that the applicants we had for this commission exceeded all expectations that I had. I just, I'm just so impressed. As usual, I mean, the years that I've been on this council, I've, I've been witness to so much, so much volunteer, I mean, this, the city, citizens of the city are always at topic of each other to get involved and to do their part. And this, this coalition is, like I said, it's just exceeded my expectations and I'm just so impressed with the, the people that we've had come out and interview for. So with that, if nothing else for the community meetings this evening, we can adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yo.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night.